Call for call.
Council Barton.
President.
President Council Kehoe.
President.
President Council Pacano.
President.
President Council Palucci.
President.
President Council Frey.
President.
President Council Seah. Assistant Council Ford. Assistant Council Ned.
Present.
President Council Lozey.
Present.
President Council Palin.
Present.
President Council Trahan.
Present.
Present, not present.
Can we all please rise for a moment's silence? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. I would like to do is explain what the format is going to be for the special meeting I call this evening. We are going to allow Mr. Bob Norton, the CEO of North Shore Medical Center, to make a statement, say anything he'd like to regarding what's happening up at Union Hospital. Pam Lawrence is with us as well. And I apologize if I don't have your title accurate, I believe you're the Senior VP of Administration, my recollection is accurate. After Ms. Lawrence and Mr. Norton make statements, we're going to open the floor up to the City Council to ask questions of either of, thank you, either Mr. Norton or Ms. Lawrence, or the City's Law Department. Once that's concluded, on motion of the City Council, we'd like to take public comments from anybody that would like to speak at the podium. So with that, Mr. Norton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Council. Good evening, everyone. I am Bob Norton. I'm the President of North Shore Medical Center and a member of the Senior Leadership Team at Portless Health Care. We have asked to share a statement for the formal record. During a time of change in health care, we remain committed to finding the best way to provide care for our patients on the North Shore, care that is high quality and affordable. It is our intention to provide several forums to share details of our plans so we can hear community feedback. Last week, we met with hundreds of staff and employees. We have scheduled a meeting with Union Hospital neighbors for next Wednesday evening. An open forum will follow for the Ward 10 community facilitated by an independent moderator to ensure a full and fair discussion of the plan and to listen to the community's concerns. Our plan is guided by need and informed by 2012 Health Needs Assessment, completed in partnership with local health policy leaders. Access to primary, specialty, and urgent care are a universal demand, and medical health and substantive use services are a top priority. We believe this plan will provide better care to all we serve and leave on the Union campus those services that Linn residents use most: primary, specialty, and urgent care, lab and radiology, and emergency services. And it will provide much-needed access to behavioral health, to behavioral health care operated by Massachusetts General Hospital, a world leader in medicine and research. Taken in its entirety, the plan will, number one, create a center of excellence in primary care on the Union Hospital campus that includes primary, specialty, and urgent care and associated outpatient services such as lab and infusion, as well as support programs including nutrition counseling and diabetes management. Second, create a center of excellence in behavioral health on the Union Hospital campus with psychiatry and behavioral health operated by the Massachusetts General Hospital. This comes in a time when the state is losing much-needed behavioral health capacity. Third, it will expand primary, specialty, urgent care, and behavioral health services throughout the North Shore at our North Shore Physician Group offices. Fourth, it will invest in the Linn Community Health Center to support its continued expansion of its outstanding patient-centered medical home services. Fifth, the plan consolidates hospital-based medical and surgical services on one campus in Salem to meet the needs of all of our patients from all of the communities we serve. And lastly, we intend to maintain emergency services on the Salem and the Union campuses. I thank you for the opportunity to share this plan with you this evening, and I look forward to further dialogue with the community about this plan both this evening and our upcoming meetings that we have scheduled. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence, do you have any statements? Council Lozey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Bob Norton and Pam Lawrence for attending this evening, and I also want to thank all of the residents that came out tonight, even though our beloved Sox are in a playoff game tonight. But I think it just goes to show how important this issue really is. This is a business decision by Partners and North Shore Medical Center that may work on paper for them, but for the 90,000 residents of Linn, it isn't about crunching numbers to both protecting themselves and their loved ones and ensuring that they have access to top-notch health care in their community. And from what we've seen in the proposed realignment plan, Linn is getting the short end of the step. We are losing core medical services, we are losing accessible local services, and we are not getting adequate services for a community in need. We are in need of top-notch medical services, and we are in need of answers from hospital officials on how Linn residents' health and privacy will be protected. On a personal note, 11 years ago today, my father-in-law was suffering from chest pains and tried to get himself to Salem Hospital. He was found with his car in park at a red light on Highland Ave, and sadly, he didn't make it to the ER and he passed. To Partners and North Shore Medical Center, this plan may be a business decision that benefits their balance sheets, but to us, the residents of Linn, it is a decision that impacts our health, our safety, and our community. I and other elected officials have called for this meeting, and others to see if Partners and North Shore Medical Center can soften the impact by embracing the idea that all of what is Union Hospital is a part of this community, and although treating behavioral and mental health has an important role, we need to leverage the plan changes so that Linn continues to have core medical service, excuse me, services available in Union Hospital. I would urge Partners and North Shore Medical Center executives that they would maybe revise their plan so that the concerns we hear tonight can be incorporated. Thank you.
Any additional questions from councils? Council Kehoe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for attending today's hearing. My name is Dan Kehoe, and City Council at large, I represent the interest in the entire city. I have a few questions for you, and I have a few comments. One, could you please define for us what exactly is behavioral health care?
I can, although I'm not professional in that area, but behavioral health care is a generic term that is used to describe the treatment that our institution and others give to patients with mental illness.
And that mental illness includes things like we would understand, like schizophrenia, bipolar disorders, something to that effect, but it also includes folks who have mental illnesses due to substance abuse?
It's a wide-ranging term that I think includes all of those things. It also includes things that, quite frankly, strike closer to home for many of us, eating disorders among young people, many things that strike unfortunately families in dire need at difficult times.
When you talk about providing health care, are we talking about inpatient health care or outpatient health care? How are these folks going to interact with our neighborhood?
Yeah, so we are talking about both inpatient and outpatient care, and therefore, we will be providing those services on the Union Campus as we currently do. You may know, we actually have two mental health units on the Union Campus now, and so we will be providing that service there, of course. The units are secure units so that the patients are not allowed to leave the units, and we have more than adequate security presence there to make sure that that happens. So we believe we're meeting the needs of the patients and protecting the needs of the community.
And in developing this plan, have you spoken with the Chief of Police in the City of Linn? Because currently, we only have one car that goes up and down Linn Film Street, so security's a, and it's a busy city, so security in that area is a primary concern for a lot of the folks here. And how are you interacting with the police, and have they been involved at an early stage? Or is this something that we're going to get them involved now?
Yeah, it's a great question, and quite honestly, we have not had a direct conversation with the police department. We should do that as this plan moves forward and matures, and we have a very close working relationship with the police department now. I expect we'll be able to work out a way whereby we continue that close working relationship and protect everybody in the process.
And just one more, I yield, I do have more. And where are we with this plan? What is the course of events from this point forward? I mean, the cat's out of the bag now, so what are you going to do?
Yeah, great question. We put this plan forward, excuse me, I keep getting too close to the point before I think, we put this plan forward now about a week ago with its various components that you heard me highlight this evening. I view this as a beginning of a discussion about this plan, and a discussion that I suspect will be a long discussion both with our neighbors and the people that we serve and the communities that we serve. We also have to go through a state approval process to get a determination of need to actually do this. There are public hearings associated with the determination of need process as well. So I suspect this is the beginning of a long dialogue, and we welcome that dialogue.
I would yield, Mr. President, if anyone else has any further questions. Council Barton.
Yes, I thank you for being here. I just have a quick question. When Linn Hospital closed down, was there any kind of deals made that the ER would always be open and available?
So I can't answer that question. I wasn't here when Linn Hospital closed down. I do know that when Union Hospital joined Partners, there was a commitment to continue maintaining services for five years, and a capital expenditure amount that was dictated in that process, this was in the state DUI process, there was about $15 million over that five-year period. We've actually spent three times that amount in the time that we've been in the hospital as a part of the North Shore Medical Center family, but I'm not familiar with any restrictions of the previous closing.
I think there was something, if they build, more building and stuff, that that would assure that they'd be there.
And we have done that. We have actually yet expended three times what we committed to expend in that process.
Thank you. Council Frey.
Mr. President, thank you for having me speak, Mr. Norton, Ms. Lawrence. Could you just explain a little bit about the emergency care? Is it going to be open 24/7? Is it going to continue as a full-time indefinitely, or is it something that you're going to do a needs assessment and determine that it's unable to continue?
Yes, thank you for that question, because it's been a very important part of our planning process. We are fully committed to keeping emergency services on both campuses for as far down the future as any of us can see at this point in time. So we will have emergency services available on the Union Campus as we do now and on the Salem Campus.
Thank you. Just one more question, Mr. President. In terms of process, I've been a governor for over years. I've seen processes unfold at the state, local level. I've never seen one done in such a deeply flawed way in terms of, I mean, essentially on bill to press release. And I don't know that the residents here were notified, I certainly wasn't notified, and my fellow councilors here weren't notified. Could you just walk us through on how these decisions are going to be made? Because right now, it seems like it's a done deal, and we're sitting here very frustrated with a need for a lot of answers, and I don't think it'll even be solved tonight, too.
Yeah, thank you. I don't believe this is a done deal. I mentioned a minute ago in response to Councilman Barton's question that there are already scheduled numerous opportunities for us to interact. Next Wednesday evening, we've scheduled a meeting with the Ward 1 neighbors because we thought it was important to start there with our close-in neighbors.
You didn't start there, though. You actually did something you've done since the outbreak. You didn't have a talk to the Chief of Police. It seems like this is kind of, you know, you're trying to cover your butt.
Well, I would disagree with that respectfully, of course, but this is a long process we've just started. The plan, as I mentioned in my comments, can't be implemented for another three-year period, because in order to implement this plan, we have major renovations that we have to do on both campuses to actually create the physical space to care for the patients that we care for. So again, I view this as the beginning of a very long dialogue that we're anxious to continue to have. Obviously, we have thoughts about what the right way is to provide this care going forward as we have been asked, and I would just say there is nothing in this plan in which North Shore Medical Center in any way gives up on its commitment to care for every patient that we currently care for and to make that care better. And I want everybody to understand that.
So as the process unfolds, you have public meetings, you have officials. What changes can be made? I mean, what is the process? Who is the decision-making entity that will decide ultimately what will be at Union Hospital?
Yeah, I think that's a complex question. You know, the official decision-making entity, and I think the official entity that has to actually pass on this with an organized vote is the Department of Public Health Council. And that is, as I mentioned earlier, a process that is complete with many public hearings in the process, but we don't want to wait for that process. Again, we started organizing this first meeting next Wednesday. I mentioned in my previous comments that we, shortly after that, we'll organize a broader input session for all of the members of the Linn community. So we want that input, we tend to listen to that input. We've already listened to a lot of input about the plan.
Council Barton.
Yes, just to take off on what Council Frey said, and I'd like to hear what the people say, so I won't be too loud, but it's not only the councils. I mean, I think Council Barton said it was some sort of negotiation for the emergency room years ago, and I believe the Linn Healthcare Task Force has been the recognized community group working with the hospital since Linn Hospital closes, closed years ago, and has done a lot of good things for the community. They tell me they were completely blindsided. They didn't find out until last week. So us as councils, us as the city were blindsided, the Linn Healthcare Task Force, people who are volunteers, who have done so much for the city, they were blindsided. And then I called friends of mine at Salem, and they seem to be much farther along in this process, you know? They seem to know a lot more. So I don't understand how Salem seems to know what's going on, and now we're being, I'm glad to hear you say that it's not a done deal, and maybe we can fix this, but at this point, I just don't think it's right to wait, notify us in a press release, ignore the community group that's been working with you all these years, and sort of have it all laid out. You know, you have the center of excellence, you have your deal for the emergency room, you're building another emergency room there, everything planned out already, so it leaves it up to us to ask these questions because we weren't involved in the very beginning. So I just throwing that out there, and like you to comment on this, because going forward, this isn't going to work if it's going to be that type of relationship.
So I would say we don't want to have that kind of relationship either. Any plan that begins a dialogue about important services in the community has to start with a starting discussion point. And what we put on the table is our best plan as to how these services might be provided in the future. We've had an active, dynamic working relationship with the Linn Healthcare Task Force for many years. We have an organized trustee committee that they are a part of to be able to get for the conversation going about this plan and virtually every other thing that we do. I would just respectfully say that all we've done so far is put a plan on the table to start the dialogue about how to do this the right way, and we certainly expected there would be a lot of opinions about this. I know it's a very emotional issue for everybody, and we welcome that dialogue, and we're open to receiving further impact or input about this plan and how people feel. Again, as I mentioned in my answer to one of the previous questions, this is a three-year process that has to begin somewhere. And I would just say that to your, there'll be a question about Salem having earlier knowledge. There was no earlier knowledge given to anybody in Salem than there was to anybody in Linn. I don't know where that comes from.
Council Trahan.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Norton and Ms. Lawrence, for coming tonight. I just have a quick couple of questions. Now, you talked about the emergency room is going to stay there. Now, someone who's entered into a bin and a car accident or whatever, and is going to need to be surgery, are you still going to, are you going to have surgery at the hospital? I hope people understand what you're doing.
Yeah, it's a great question. I think that does need more conversation. There are different levels of emergency departments that exist all over the state today, and the State Department of Public Health categorizes emergency departments at different levels. We will have to go through that process with the Department of Health to determine what that level of classification is. You know, I think many people know this, but just to reemphasize it, we actually have differences today in the way in which we provide emergency services to all of the communities we treat. As I think everyone in this, well, I don't know whether everyone knows, I shouldn't say that, but certainly it is true that if someone is being transported by ambulance for cardiac disease, our cardiac center that does angioplasty and cardiac surgery is on the Salem Campus. So you're already being triaged directly to the Salem Campus for certain services. I suspect much of that will continue, but again, that's a dialogue we need to have with DPH.
So if there's an accident, say, right in front of us, like right in front of us, okay? If there's an accident, someone who expresses the emergency room, so they're not going to be able to have surgery there, they're going to have to be shipped all the way to Salem, or is that the way I'm understanding it?
I believe that probably will be the case, but once again, we already do that today. We already take certain patients at a certain illness level, and our physicians make clinical judgment as to which patients are able to be treated by the Union-based team or which ones need to be treated by the Salem-based team. And I think each and every one of us wants to be treated by the most qualified team, no matter where that is. So that's our continuing commitment.
So by opening up the beds in Union Hospital, what are you doing? You're not doing any more surgical at the hospital, is that what you're doing?
The plan is that all of the medical and surgical capacity will be done at Salem. You know, it's an interesting dynamic, and I should just comment on this briefly, if you can give me a minute. I think understandably, people think of Salem Hospital as Salem's hospital, and Union Hospital as Linn's hospital. The reality is that more people from Linn get their care at Salem Hospital than they do at Linn Hospital today. More than 50% of patients coming from Linn choose to get their care at Salem Hospital. So we're in North Shore Medical Center, and we...
Everybody will have an opportunity to speak. Mr. Norton.
So we think of North Shore Medical Center, and we act every day as if we are meeting the needs of the entire community that we serve, not any individual city in town.
Yeah, I just have one other question. I didn't know if you were aware of this, but a third of our population in Linn is probably 65 years or older, and a lot of them are probably going to hear from them tonight, live around the U of Hospital.
I'm very aware of that, and we have actually taken that into account in the plan that we put forward, and that one of the major components of that plan is increased access to primary care and the new concept of what's called patient-centered medical homes. It's the concept of physician practices taking full responsibility for managing the entire spectrum of care. Our intention is to expand that capacity on the Union Campus so that the neighbors around the hospital can get that access when they need it.
And then just one more.
Any ideas for one, Council?
Just like you said earlier, you're going to have a meeting with the people from WARD on next week, and I see a lot of them are here tonight, and it's going to be hundreds of that meeting. If they come and for us and we all come, is that, I mean, is that something that's going to, when you strengthen numbers kind of thing, are you people going to listen to us and work with the city, or what?
We absolutely listen to everybody, and we've worked with the city on everything we've done. We want to continue to do that as well. So I welcome that input. I welcome more dialogue about this. You know, I have to say that this is not an easy decision for anybody. It wasn't an easy decision for the North Shore Medical Center or the Senior Leadership Team, and therefore, further dialogue, I think, is warranted in this situation, there's no question about that.
And now, what's the purpose of doing this? Is it money? I mean, it just seems like a city of our size, that hospital can certainly do well with just taking care of the people that come up here daily. I don't understand why, why the change?
Yeah, so I think the origin of this plan comes from really many of the changes that are being called for really at a national level around the way in which we should be organizing health care in this country. And I don't mean to be too far, you know, away from the current discussion about that, but there's a national demand to change the way we provide health care, to be able to establish these centers of primary care, to take responsibility for coordinating a patient's true medical needs in a way that they never have before. And each one of our practices and each one of the practices at the Linn Community Health Center, our partners in many of the endeavors that we do, are on that journey to become patient-centered medical homes. The future organization of health care is that that's the most important tidus of how your care is managed, not necessarily where you get admitted to the hospital. People get admitted to the hospital for far fewer things today than they ever did. So it's really that change in health care that is happening nationally that was the driving force behind rethinking this plan. And again, at the end of the day, I hope we'll be able to convince people that people will get better access and better care if this plan is going forward.
And then just one more, I promise. Now, are you talking about expanding onto the area of that hospital or just within to accept what you're trying to do?
No, just within.
Thank you.
Council Barton.
I have this question for our attorney.
Thank you, Attorney by Taylor.
Thank you. It's just the same question that I asked earlier. Is there a way to find out that three victims in Linn Hospital was?
We'd have to research that, but I'm sure there is.
Okay. We will do that, yes. Okay, thank you.
Council Kehoe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Norton, North Shore Medical Center and Union Hospital is a large employer of the City of Linn. A lot of those people who are employed there actually live right there. They purposely get moved there because they want to be close to the place where they work. Some have been there for 30, 40 years, and they enjoy walking to work. When I hear in your plan the words consolidated services on one campus, I'm concerned about jobs for Linners going to Salem. Are you going to expect people who've been working there for a number of years to now be traveling to Salem opposed to being in Linn? And what's the net gain or net loss of jobs on that campus of Union? I know there's 119 SCIU, 1199 in Linn, there's MNA, Mass Nurses Association in Salem. How are all those things to be figured out? How are these people going to be planned for their future when they're at retirement? And they want to know if they're going to be at a different location that's difficult to get to in their waiting years of employment? How's that going to be addressed?
Thank you for your question. I would begin by saying nobody cares more about those employees than I do. We've had that actively in our plan and in our discussion for a long period of time. I would ask people to think about this in the following ways, and that is, what we are really doing here is a repositioning of the uses of the two campuses, and patients will move from one campus to the other in the process. The staff that cares for those patients have to move with those patients, and they will have jobs to move with those patients. So I expect the impact on jobs overall to be very minimal. I think maybe in the 200 range, let's say.
Plus or minus?
Let me finish. In the 200 range, in the consolidation process of the reuse of the campuses, and we have many more, much more turnover than that in any given year. Remember that we have three to five years to plan this journey going forward. So we believe we can manage that so that everybody keeps the jobs that they have. They may need to move to the other campus, that is true. I've had those discussions with our employees in a series of town meetings that we organize... I've had those discussions with our employees in a series of town meetings that we organized last week, and I'm very sensitive to individual concerns about that. At the end of the day, we need to have the right staff to care for these patients, and therefore, there should be opportunities for everybody.
And my final, because I do want to get to the audience. You talked about the Lynns primarily going to Salem opposed to Union. As someone who lives closer to Salem, I do go to Salem because it is the closest hospital. However, the infrastructure improvements that I've seen in Salem don't match what I've seen or lack the run of Union. So I would like to work with you in trying to expand Union, try to put more money into Union, and actually even more jobs and more folks up from Lynn into Union. I think that's the direction I think most of the folks want to go in here opposed to shifting all kinds of investments over to Salem and forcing us to drive sometimes at length. I mean, it's tough to get from Goodwood Circuit to Wyman Square, let alone from that area all the way to Salem. That's all.
Thank you. I just have a little question, Mr. Norton. I really understand your last answer. So is there going to be any job loss at Union Hospital with all this?
So it's a very difficult question to answer, and I'll tell you why. And I don't want you to think that I'm dumping the question anyway, so I'm going to directly add you when I enter this question. We have not done the detailed planning that we need to do on how this plan all plays out over this three-year period. Largely, one of the reasons we haven't done it is because we don't think this is a final plan in its current form. But I repeat what I said a minute ago, and that is, if you think about patients that we're currently treating on both campuses, we are going to move the services that we, some services that we do on the Salem campus to Lynn and vice versa. Those patients need care. The caregivers that are now providing that care will move with the patients. So largely, the job situation should remain stable. It's my hope, and this was Counsel Cahill's point too, that we, through this plan and continued growth of the North Shore Medical Center, which we've worked very hard on, can grow more jobs in both settings so that we have more opportunity for everybody. That needs to be a part of our planning going forward as well. We've added, in this journey I mentioned earlier, around the primary care presence and the birth of the Patient-Centered Medical Home concept, we've added 35 new primary care physicians in the last five years to be able to add those points of access for people. Those primary care physicians attract more patients, those patients come to both campuses. So we hope to grow and have more jobs in the future.
And then, well, I don't know, I really got into that yet, so we didn't really get the ears, we didn't know if they're not, but I know you're kind of jazz around, maybe they already know, but I would think that they would know if it was going to cost us by now if we're doing this plan. But I just have one other question. Now, where are the patients coming from that supposedly are going to be coming, like, what other hospitals are they coming from?
So there are two current site units that we would relocate to the Union campus. One is currently located on the Salem campus. The second is currently located on the campus of Lawrence Wakefield, I'm sorry, of Lawrence Memorial, which is part of a Hallmark system that is on a journey to become part of the Partners' Health Care System.
So why are we getting patients from Lawrence? Are they part of your hospital? Are they part of your hospital?
They are not now, but the Hallmark system is moving in the direction of becoming part of Partners. If it becomes part of Partners, they might consolidate there as well.
So why are they not keeping their patients?
Well, it's not that they're not keeping their patients. It's that what we're trying to do in this process is to create a center of excellence, as I mentioned, in mental health and psychiatry. And just like any other clinical service, having a critical mass of those patients in one location allows us to have the levels of clinical capability that those patients need. And I have to say, I know this too is a, you know, bit of a challenging part of this conversation that we're having, but we believe our obligation to meet the needs of our mental health patients is as strong as our obligation to meet any other health care needs, and we view that as an integrated responsibility that we have.
So how many patients do we have in Lynn now that are currently pausing for the behavioral?
I believe there are about 60 patients on the current campus. The plan is there would be about 100.
So yeah, before anymore.
Going around the others.
Now, was there any conversation in the next couple of weeks with other meetings you're going to have with all these residents and how unhappy you're going to be here that they are about this? Is there any chance of moving those 60 people to Lawrence since the people from Lawrence kind of...
I would say we put a plan on the table to start a conversation, and we're willing to think about other options.
I'd be interested in actually attending that meeting because I'm really tired of Lynn becoming a dumping ground for Lawrence. I believe I can tell you that. I just feel like that's what's happening to us, and I'll tell you, I can't speak the rest of my partings, but I'm not happy. And you're going to hear from a lot of people tonight, and you're going to hear from a lot of the city next week when you have your meeting, that we don't want this. And we...
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you happen to be a secret deal with the city of Lawrence and another city? That's why you decided to remove those patients to Lynn? And also tell us why you decided to leave? Please explain.
So I think, again, the conversation with the Hallmark Health Care System, which currently owns both Lawrence Memorial and Lawrence Wakefield, again, was around this question of how can we best meet the needs of patients with mental health and psychiatry issues in the joint proposal that's on the table? And that's related to the idea of creating, again, this center of excellence under the auspices of the Massachusetts General Hospital Department of Psychiatry. The Massachusetts General Department of Psychiatry is the number one ranked psychiatry department in the country. And we feel by, again, having these patients together in one site allows us to bring the level of clinical expertise that these patients and families need. And I can tell you that I have weekly interaction with patients and families who have family members who are in need of mental health and psychiatry services, and it is a need in our broader community that we feel we have an obligation to meet. And quite frankly, most people are not stepping up to that plate in the state of Massachusetts. We've decided to do that because we're committed to that mission.
Did you know we have a David Hospital also, right? That's going on right here.
I do.
I think it's one key we are not, so please think about that as well.
Counsel Craig.
President, just real quickly, and again, we do want to hear the residents' views on this, and it kind of continues off of what Counsel Neff had said. I mean, I think we all here appreciate the need for mental health treatment as well as substance abuse treatment, but I think we could all agree that Lynn does its fair share already. And I think adding additional psych units to serve the rest of the reason is unfair to the people here, especially when we've not been involved in the process thus far. I do appreciate you scheduling these meetings moving forward. I hope they actually count for something in the end. I'd like to, you know, yield to the rest of the council and the residents here today.
Any further questions from the council? If there's no objection from the council, instead of me going down and exchanging places with Counsel Ford to ask questions from the floor, if there's no objection, I'd like to ask a couple of questions from the chair. Is that acceptable to the council? Thank you. Mr. Norton.
I should turn around again.
Thank you. You've mentioned a number of times, you use the word "full and fair discussion of the plan." And I've always looked at a full and fair discussion of a plan as being part of the process, you know, being involved beforehand, giving our input, giving what our needs are, to be actually at the table to discuss that. How can you say that the city of Lynn is going to be, there's going to be a full and fair discussion of the plan when I see two full-page ads in the Lynn item the past two days explaining what it's going to be? Your modeling campaign is already going forward, and we're going to have public meetings so people can get up and express their frustration, and then you're going to walk away and go home. That's very frustrating to me. If you want this to be a full and fair discussion of the plan, then somebody from the city of Lynn, somebody from the Lynn City government should be part of the decision-making process as we move forward. Will you commit to the people of this city that you will allow somebody from the city of Lynn to be part of the decision-making process of the future plan and not just participate in neighborhood meetings?
So I would say that I would like there to be participation in this process from many people from the city of Lynn, including the councilors and yourself and others. I don't know what the process would be that would, let's say, legally involve people in that process, but we have, as I said a minute ago, already begun the process of setting up dialogue about this plan. And I understand that, you know, the controversial nature of this plan has created some worry, if that's the right word, about people's previous involvement. Again, I just emphasize this is a three-year journey that we're on here. It has a major part that has to be approved by the State Department of Public Health. I view this dialogue as just starting. I don't view it as having been done in any other way.
So to answer my question, would someone from the city of Lynn be able to participate in a decision-making process, having a voice going to vote at the table as this plan moves forward?
I would just say I'm not sure I know how to do that. We want as much input as we possibly can. I turned to the lawyers, and there is not a, I can't think tonight of a legal way to organize that process, but we want as much input as we can possibly get. We are willing and in the process of talking with everyone involved in this process, including everybody in this room.
I would venture to guess that if you went to the board and you asked the board of directors to take a vote to expand and allow someone from Lynn City government to actually sit on the board for this particular issue, that that would be a legal avenue to travel to allow us at the table. Okay. Okay. You know, it's, you know, I'm speaking to a lot of different doctors. They have told me over time that this has been something that has been systematically planned, that slowly services have been taken away at Union Hospital, including all the administrative offices. None of your offices are there anymore. There's acute beds closure, in-house anesthesia clinic closure, the endoscopy closure, urology services, I'm probably saying this not wrong, nephrotomy, kidney services, aortic aneurysm repair, you know, closing outpatient's physical therapy, closed heart failure clinic that moved to Salem, outpatient's physical therapy, closure of the cardiac rehab, it's went on and on and on over a period of time. So this is something that clearly has been planned. And, you know, and I read, you say that nobody else knew about it, but I'm reading a press release or an article from the Salem Evening News last week where it says that, it comes right up and says, Lynn's Union will close its 84 inpatient beds. It comes right up and says that the mayor of Salem has already spoken with state transportation officials to talk about infrastructure improvements on Route 107. That was October 9th and October 10th. It says Lynn will close all of its 83 inpatient medical beds, with most of those headed to Salem. Lynn's Union Hospital campus has approximately 100 psychiatric patient beds. This doesn't seem like something that, a decision that was made in a vacuum. Do you have in writing now a five-year plan as to what you envision Union Hospital looking like in five years and North Shore Medical Center looking like in five years?
We do, and it's the plan that we released a week ago.
Okay, it was a three-page press release? Or is it more comprehensive than that?
No, there's much more comprehensive documentation behind it.
Would we be able to get a copy of that?
I suspect the answer is yes, although I say I don't know that it's organized in a way that you would, we have a book we could give you, but we could certainly work on providing more of that detail.
A couple of follow-up questions, if I can. You mentioned in your opening statement that you are going to make some type of financial commitment to Lynn Community Health Center?
Yes.
And what is that?
The financial commitment is to help the Lynn Community Health Center build out the fourth floor of the building, the third floor, I'm sorry, the third floor of the building that they just opened in downtown Lynn to add primary care and mental health capacity at that site. The new construction that we're supporting is above $3.5 million in total, and will allow them to add approximately 15 new primary care physicians and 20 new mental health providers.
Which is great, because Lynn Community Health Center does a great job.
They do a fabulous job.
But, you know, the people of the city of Lynn can't be bought off. You know, you said here that there's going to be $200 million investment, Lynn and Salem and neighboring communities, and $170 million of that will include a new ER and 72 private beds at Salem Hospital. $200 million, and you're providing Lynn with $3 million of that. And, you know, all the councils bring up excellent points, and the people of the city of Lynn aren't stupid. I read this, you know, one of the biggest comments that I caught over this weekend was this statement. "North Shore Medical Center also intends to maintain emergency services on the Salem, Lynn and Union campuses. The level of emergency care at each site will be based on the needs of the community and patient safety priorities." Talk about a lack of a direct answer on whether or not that emergency room will remain open in perpetuity. That's what I got more comments on that than anybody else. What does that mean?
It means what I said a minute ago in my response to the previous question, and that is, there are current Department of Public Health regulations on levels of emergency department and what those emergency departments are allowed to do under the DPH regulations. We are going to have to have an important dialogue with DPH about what level of emergency services we'll be able to provide, and that will be our continued commitment. We can't obviously provide anything that's not safe. We can't provide anything that's not supported by DPH regulations. So that's, again, another example of a dialogue that is started, and we'll have to continue engagement in that dialogue with DPH.
Any additional questions from the council? Counsel Flucci.
Counsel, just ask the other phone, you guys, for example.
I'm sorry?
Can you just ask those other phone events? Don't break them.
Well, we could, and I said a minute ago that this is a dialogue, but I would just ask us to consider as a broader community, where those patients get their care. There are patients...
Where they get it?
Some of them are not getting it. There's a huge shortage of psychiatry and mental health services in our state and in our communities. On any given day, we have five to 10 patients in our emergency department who are waiting for psychiatry beds. They can't find beds. They sometimes end up spending a long time in the emergency department, and that's not good care for anybody, quite frankly. So we're trying to meet a community need, and that's the way we put the plan forward.
Any further questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion to open the floor of the comments, motion made by Counsel Lozey, by her second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If anybody would like to make any public comments, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Constable T.C. Anacantis. I live at 14 Border Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. Aside from some of my original questions that I would have asked, and having been a part of the system, I'm going to ask with this behavioral health section, you can break behavioral health into three different categories. One is in children who are having problems with their education. There are adults who have like spousal abuse, and they have problems in the court system. And then there are senior adults or people over the age of 50 who are now being faced with dementia, Alzheimer's, and so many other things. We have some really, really good facilities inland like Bay Ridge, Community Health, LA Enterprise City. Some of these are also court-sponsored. So I don't... So I don't really feel that we need to subtract from Union Hospital the services that we're already getting in these places. So if I have some way that this can be worked out, you know, behavioral health is always going to be a growing part of our community. I deal with it in the nursing homes, I deal with, everybody knows what I do. I'm a therapeutic entertainer, okay? And the main thing is, is that we, I feel that the folks will probably want to have dialogue with the court system, you know, in what the future of behavioral health from that point of view is, but, you know, we have to look at these community-run facilities that are already in operation, and they're doing a very, very good job. Thank you very much.
You're going to read my comments because they're all lymphed. My name's Dale Wanda, and I'm a community psychologist who has been a tax-paying homeowner in Lynn since nineteen seventy-nine. And Suse Pond in Ward One was a quarter mile from Union Hospital since nineteen eighty-six. My activities in Ward One include being vice president of the Suse Pond Association with almost a hundred and seventy pond-abiding households and approximately twice that number of resident households adjacent to the pond by our roadways. I am also a daily walker with many, many dog owners in the greatest natural resource, the federally designated second-largest urban park in America, Lynn Woods, that stretches for more than twenty-one hundred acres behind Union Hospital. During my clinical training and subsequent community organizing and consulting career, I've had an opportunity to work extensively in mental health, behavioral health, and public health as a healthcare administrator. It has been my pleasure to assist entire communities to launch long-enduring health programs, including Hawthorne North Shore, Family Health Center, which is now Boston's largest health center, the Brockton Community Health Center, the Sydney Borum Junior Clinic for Student Youth. While raising about three-hundred-million dollars during that time for many needy populations and worthwhile caregivers, I had an opportunity to study the behavior of many large hospitals in interaction with communities and to understand their motivation to make profits or build surpluses while being seen as doing good things for people. Unfortunately, large institutions frequently misjudge the capacity of communities to provide simple and reasonable solutions to complex problems, particularly when the solutions affect their bottom line. In this case, I believe it is reasonable for Lynn residents to expect that as North Shore's largest city, a full-capacity hospital will be operated here rather than in several smaller cities that are often over a half-hour away during commuter rush. I also believe that the concerns of the community regarding what happens to mentally ill and physically addicted or behavioral health people upon discharge after being brought into our city from other places by hospitals for inpatient care needs to be regarded. Not what should happen or what might happen if they behave and take their medications, but what will happen when they jump and Lynn is suddenly charged with caring for the homlessly mentally ill who go off medications and the addicted lifestyle of veterans who choose not to be clean and sober. Ward One and Lynn Woods will become a de facto safe harbor for people living a street life, recruiting our children into that street life, acting out, reloading our services while urinating, defecating, spilling other bodily fluids, and trashing our only residential portion of the city in order to stay in close proximity to your hospital. For starters, we can just say no to this attempt to turn all of Lynn into North Shore's social service method. If that doesn't work, I recommend we consider bolder measures. The average patient loss per day per person at hospitals in Massachusetts in two thousand eleven, according to Kaiser, was two thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. More may be paid by the system for psychiatric and behavioral healthcare. The city council and mayor should pass a new law to tax any healthcare system that brings people from other communities into Lynn for approximately fifty percent of the state, federal, private, and shared revenues paid to the hospital per person for any person that does not return to their community of origin or who has a readmission to that hospital within one year. That may be a barrier for union counseling and criminal justice costs that Lynn and Ward One will endure under the Union Hospital plan waiting proposed. Thank you very much, Your Honor.